Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town of Pownell Select Board Meeting on February 23rd, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Board member roll call.
Angie Rowling.
Jamie Person.
Bob Jarvis.
Brian Harris.
Mike Gardner. Uh, the approval of the agenda. Couple of things we want to do. The agenda, um, number 12, we'd like to move up as 6A under the warrants. And we'd like to add our treasurer as 6B after the warrants. Um, is there anything else on the agenda? Okay, public comment, approval of minutes of February 9th, Select Board Meeting, approval of minutes of February 9th, Special Select Board Meeting, warrants, uh, correspondence, excess weight permits, old business, uh, Bennington County Sheriff's Department meeting greet with the new leadership, audit proposal, excuse me, roadside trash and solid waste ordinance cleanup procedures and funding discussion, executive for personnel, executive for contractual, public comment, and agenda.
So moved with the changes.
Second.
Any more discussion? Questions? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I'd like to open up public comment, Hannah.
Not for many minutes.
Okay, uh, approval of minutes of February 9th, 2023, this, uh, regular Select Board Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, this discussion and deletions? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Minutes of February 9th, 2023, Special Select Board Meeting.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussing corrections, deletions? All those in favor, Angie?
Abstain because I wasn't here, correct?
That's, um...
Is that the one that I wasn't there? That was Arpa. That was Arpa?
Yeah.
Oh, that is, okay.
You were here for that one. The other one wasn't a meeting, it was just information.
Okay, that's right, sorry, aye.
That's why you threw me a curveball.
Sorry.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Uh, I wasn't there for that one.
So you're abstaining?
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, that one I was there for.
Yeah, we weren't here.
No, I, yeah. So the first one I should have abstained, this one I'll say aye too, sorry.
Okay. Uh, warrants, accounts payable, uh, 21723, thirty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars, seventy-four cents.
Don't move.
Second.
Any corrections, questions? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Accounts payable, 22423, thirty-three thousand, twenty-nine dollars and eighteen cents.
So moved.
Any questions? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Uh, accounts payable on the new town hall, twenty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents.
Don't move.
Okay.
Uh, any questions? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Payroll, 21723, eleven thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and seventeen cents.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any questions? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Bob?
But, aye.
Sorry, Jamie?
Aye.
And Brian?
Aye.
Mike, aye. Sorry about that, I don't worry. Payroll, 22423, eleven thousand, forty-six dollars and ten cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Uh, which brings us into P27 Large Gathering Permit, uh, for the Stromeyer Road Race. Uh, I believe that's you, Paul?
Yes, it is. How are you guys today?
Good, how are you?
Excellent, thank you. Trying to stay out of the, uh, trying to stay out of the snow, but that ain't working. So, but thank you for having me back. Yep, um, I sent in the large gathering permit and I believe Joe, I see Joe in there, um, and we, uh, we've signed that and we're just looking to make sure that's good with you guys.
I believe our concerns were discussed with our highway foreman and...
And I, I think, um, there's been a, a parking plan has been submitted along with the permit, right?
Yep, so I sent that back to you guys earlier and if it is super muddy, they'll have them coming through the Bennington side.
That's what I was gonna ask Paul, um, and, and probably, it would probably be up there.
Yeah, we were gonna set up, so if it's really muddy, Paul, hi, I'm Alan Joseph. If, um, it's really super muddy on the south side of Stromeyer Road, we are going to, Joe and I will make sure somebody is at the four-corner intersection. We're gonna send them around Maple Grove, South Stream, Niles Road, come in on Middle Pownell Road, Bennington side. They can still come in, we'll just detour them. That way, if it is a mud hole, very, it depends on what the spring brings. I mean, it's not been bad so far, but we just don't know. So if they, when they come in on the Bennington side, they're coming on blacktop, they have two hundred and fifty yards, I think it is, of dirt, and then they're in the parking spot. So, so we have everything mapped. We have everything set up for whatever goes on.
Okay, yeah, and I believe Joe and I spoke as well and, you know, we'll be pulling the cars off the road far enough so that it won't be backing up on the road, um, you know, just so that's not a concern and, um, trying to keep it safe for everybody.
And we have three, um, I don't, did you guys look at the maps? So there's three entrances and they're all within a short, just, they're not very far away, they're less, they're just that little section of North Carver, Stromeyer Road. So there's three entrance exits, so there's, people can get in and out, there won't be a problem.
Right, we, we had talked about where, where it was gonna be, so I knew about where it was gonna be.
Yeah.
It was just, you know, just some concerns about, about the mud season, who knows what. April 30th, we shouldn't be in mud season, but we also shouldn't have been in mud season last week, the way we were either, okay?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So how do you know, right? It's Vermont, so we, you know, you deal with it. And then, and then the parking and that was all taken care of. So that's the only two concerns we had, uh, as far as I know.
Yeah, and I, and I spoke, I spoke with Becky as well and, uh, and we should be all set there also for the, uh, for, for the EMTs, you know, having the ambulance service and donate, donate back to the town as well.
I also can drive if there was a problem, Paul, for the squad. Like if, if there was issues and they didn't have enough people or somebody was off, I can still drive for them if I need to, because I'm on the fire scene with them, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, Large Gathering Permit.
Comes Joe.
He went a little late.
A little late.
That's all right, it's better late than never, right? I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor, any more discussion on it? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Uh, which brings us to you, Ellen.
All right, so, um, I received a phone call from Pownell Estates, the old Alder Garden, the new owners, um, asking if they could, and I need to find the right words because this is new to me, they are asking to purchase the assignment to bid. So what that means is the sale that happened in June, there was one mobile home, and there was three sold in January, so June of 2022, January of 2023, there was three sold, one's redeemed, so there's two left. What they want to do is that they will purchase the co- at the cost that we paid, plus we will get paid our interest to date of them purchasing. We are no longer obligated to deal with that when they're gonna take the trailers over as if they bought them at tax sale.
Okay.
We will get back all our money, um, the money that was spent, um, between the three mobile homes was forty-six hundred and forty dollars and forty-nine cents. So that plus whatever accumulated interest that Kevin figures out, it's per day, he does it per day, and I did not figure that out today because this all happened today. Um, and we will get our money back and then the park owners will deal with if the people don't redeem, they take over the mobile homes.
So do you have to, do you have to check with, um...
Already checked with Kevin O'Toole.
Right. Do we have to check with Bob Fisher on anything? Are we good?
Nope, we're good with that. This can happen with any tax sale, with anybody. So if you were to buy something at tax sale and you wanted to give it to somebody else and they wanted to take it over because you decided you didn't really want it, but now you're kind of stuck there, I guess you can, you can find somebody to take the assignment then, and Kevin does all the paperwork for that.
Okay.
The four hundred and fifty dollar fee for doing that, the park owners are also paying for, that's part of their cost of buying the bid.
And they read...
And then if nobody pays, they have the mobile homes. We don't have to get, we don't have to deal with people living there or we're gonna deal with a mobile home on landed.
Right. That's what I was gonna say, is they, they just pick up on that date of tax sale.
They, yeah, they pick up from whenever Kevin fills out the paperwork. Um, I told him I would let him know tomorrow, yea or nay, and he will call the Pownell Estates and, and take care of that.
For remainder of that.
My suggestion is absolutely, I mean, Kevin and I talked it through because people do it all the time, and then it just gets the town out of it. You give back your money plus the interest.
A no-brainer.
Yeah, it's a no-brainer. Right.
Unless, unless we want to start being landlords.
No, thank you.
I'm good with that.
Right, and paying the lot rent if they don't redeem, we would owe the lot rents to the park.
Right.
So, I mean, this is just one of the things that happens when we do buy stuff in tax sale. We know we've done it before, but...
You need a motion from us?
I do. You guys have to approve to do this, if you wish to do so.
I think it's a good thing.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the sale...
It's a called assignment of bid?
Approve assignment of bid to Pownell Estates?
Correct.
Should we state the amount?
Um, nope, because the amount, it's, it's for three mobile, you can state three mobile homes.
For three mobile homes?
Within Pownell Estates?
Within Pownell Estates.
Second.
As long as you're interested.
Uh, any more discussion from the board? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ellen.
Thank you, Ellen.
And they also said now that they know that we're holding them, um, they will be checking our websites because they will just directly do that from that line. So...
Cool.
Okay, thank you for taking the process also. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're all, thank you, Ellen.
Of course.
Correspondence, no correspondence tonight.
That's good. Excess weight permits?
So we have two.
Oh, we do?
We do. We have New England Quality Services, Inc., and Barrett Trucking Co., both approved by Joel.
Are they single or fleets?
Yes, uh, both fleets.
Make a motion to sign the excess weight permits.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Um, brings us to old business.
Just in case anybody had any questions or anything that's been...
No old business?
I have one old business, actually.
Oh, I knew you were.
I heard back from Vermont State today that we are able to use the money that was previously the, um, housing rehab loan program that we've had for, well, since nineteen ninety-two, um, sitting in a fund. So we will be talking about that probably at the next meeting and deciding, you know, what to do with it or how to use it.
Good moves.
Yeah, I've been working on that one for close to a year. So I was pretty happy to get that response.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So you'll set a date, you'll throw that onto an agenda at some point?
Yeah, at the next meeting.
Okay, perfect. Is that all you have?
It is?
That's it? Sorry, guys. Brings us to the, uh, Bennington County Sheriff's Department meet and greet with the new leadership.
If you would like, you can join the table.
Join the table, please.
I apologize for, uh, being a tad bit late. We also are working on some critical circumstances right now that, uh, need our attention, sorry. Yeah, so hello, my name is James Gully, pleasure to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Where would I like to start? So, um, first and foremost, I'd like to introduce my staff. Well, no, excuse me, first and foremost, thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. I, I really appreciate it. And then I would like to, thank you, Mike, I'd like to introduce my staff. This is Dr. Stephanie Peters. Dr. Peters is my administrative, um, director, and I have Lieutenant Ross Harrington. Lieutenant Harrington is fielding, um, the position of patrol commander. So where we have started approximately, um, three weeks ago, nearly, we have, yes, we have lost some staff, but nowhere near the rumors that are being spread. We are, um...
Gotta love rumors.
Well, we know where some of them are starting from and it's, 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 it's to be expected. However, uh, I would like to note that, um, we do have, um, we have made a conditional offer of one full-time, uh, certified law enforcement officer. We have hired a full-time law enforcement officer who is working on a part-time standard. We are in the hiring process of hiring another full-time law enforcement officer who, um, would like to come on board also as part-time standard. We are in the background, um, of two who will be taking over full-time in our courts, and we have multiple others who have had interviews who are, um, we are waiting and or standing by because we do not want to over-hire. Um, so the commitment to the organization in less than one month has been overwhelming, which is great on our part. Um, we are able to field all of our calls and we're growing in numbers, and yes, you may or may not have seen us out and about. We have been in all of our communities patrolling up to date, um, here particularly in Pownell. Um, we, Lieutenant Harrington and I, we kind of started off trying to get a feel for the community of Pownell, whereas Lieutenant Harrington was focusing on certain areas of the community such as Route 7346, while I was out patrolling the backroads because, um, I too have friends and family that live on South Stream Road, Barbers Park, uh, Washington Brook Road, um, you know, areas such as that, uh, Stromeyer Road, et cetera, where, um, traffic is a major concern. In that month, we have generated numerous complaints and have worked with the, um, Bennington Neighborhood Watch Program. Now, there are certain things I cannot disclose. Whereas there are, um, individuals and or groups that are here, we know where they are, and we are working with the Vermont State Police who are also watching this through the Pownell Neighborhood Watch, Craig Odell's group, and we have been working in conjunction with, um, Shastberry Barracks, Seth Loomis, Sergeant Seth Loomis, um, and also the Vermont Drug Task Force. To say this, we have had contact with the task force. I've made a phone call and we have been working collaboratively with them in the last three days here. So, um, we are...
Not a surprise.
Well, there, Mike, I'm gonna be very forward here, and I know that, uh, Ross and Stephanie can confirm that there are serious circumstances that need to be addressed here because they're also plaguing the town of Bennington. And I was on the phone with, um, Detective Sergeant, uh, Burnham, um, regarding a circumstance that happened not too long ago in the town of Bennington that has ties here in Pownell. So, um, we've been working really hard um, at trying to, um, put forth the service that you all deserve, and that's why we're here. Um, uh, I would like to say that we all come with years of knowledge and experience. Um, Stephanie, Dr. Peters has a bachelor's, let's just say, for instance, if I could, or if I may. We have a bachelor's of criminal justice. She taught, uh, um, courses of criminal justice up at Southern Vermont College. She has her master's in human services and now a doctorate in education. So we're able to use Dr. Peters's experience and her knowledge base and spread that wealth within the department that was not yet there before. Um, we have Lieutenant Harrington, who comes from Bennington Police Department. Most of you probably already know Ross. Um, Ross has handled, um, most incidences ranging from a barking dog complaint to a homicide. We have that now in-house that was not there before. Um, we have applied for grants. Um, we have just submitted a body camera grant because the agency has never sought out or never acquired body cameras. We are starting a pilot program. Um, that's looking very positive because we too need to have that, um, uh, that protection that is not, or has not been there before. Um, we have tried our best to reach out and or we've gone to Pownell School, we've stopped here and done security checks. She's, we've walked around, we've communicated with people within the town of Pownell. We've also asked them what they would like us to do, what they would like us, uh, you know, um, to do for the town of Pownell, and, um, we're kind of getting a mixed response, I should say. Um, there are those that, um, aren't quite happy with the new transition, um, and that's to be expected, and, and, and by no means, um, you know, there's no hard feelings. Number two, um, there are those that want more. And they know that in Pownell's beautiful town, um, you know, I go up and I visit Matt and Mark up on the farm from time to time and bring my kids and all that stuff, but I would say that there's also areas that are hotbeds here. I mean, technically, let's be reasonable here. Um, yeah, we all know, we can all talk about that constable conversation if you'd like. I'm very open to that. However, um...
I'll get to that when you're done.
I think that, and I would probably dare say, within the three weeks that I've been here, you guys need more than just a thirty-hour-a-week contract. I mean, in a perfect world, if the equity was there, uh, Pownell would probably, and we kind of openly say this, that, and, and it's not just us, it's also other members in the law enforcement community, that you need a police department.
I, I don't, James is as right as I can.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
I don't think you're gonna get a single argument from any single one of us.
Yeah.
On this board, okay? I really and truly don't. I know you won't. It's, it's a financial base as everything in this world is financially driven, right? It's what, we as a board think that we can afford to put on the taxpayers. So it has, that's, that's where it's a hundred percent driven. So, because you brought up the constable thing, I want to address that for a minute. I don't want to sidetrack you, if that's okay.
Certainly.
Okay. So our goal, when we researched this out or started the research, okay, wasn't to get rid of the Sheriff's Department or, or anything along those lines. So we're gonna call some rumors right now, okay? All right? Because I'm not a rumor person, and I don't think anybody sitting here on this board is a rumor person. And I know Tara's not, and I know Hannah's not, and they're the ones that are in here every day. Um, we researched this out for more options, maybe, maybe some additional coverage at a lesser cost to the taxpayer, okay? When, when at eleven o'clock at night or twelve o'clock at night, when we don't have somebody on duty from the Sheriff's Department, maybe we have a constable who can go, that has law enforcement training, okay, not just Joe Public, not just me, going in, all right? That, that's why we started that research, okay? Not to replace or, or do anything else. It was more or less to possibly increase or, or just, just give us some options to look at from, from the, the Select Board standpoint, okay? It's not, it, it wasn't, the, timing probably says otherwise.
Our biggest...
A tad.
Right? Seriously?
I mean, I'm gonna be honest, a tad.
No, I, I'm not.
I mean, the angle that, yeah, I mean, the angle where I'm coming from is, is that, um, I understand constable is one. I have an entire office. And if you need us at eleven o'clock at night, I mean, even, uh, Lieutenant Harrington and I, we've had discussions where, um, you know, uh, evening shift is something that has or was not an option in the past, whereas it is a must today.
What about weekends?
Well, that's just it. Um, there's, but every single town is screaming, because we've been to Reedsboro and all through the Gambit, and everybody's screaming weekends at eleven o'clock at night.
I for one have called the state police, and you shouldn't have to wait over forty-five minutes for the state police to come. When a place has been broken into, or there's been a, or somebody is being belligerent, and the ambulance is there and they can't control them, and they are told to abort, abort the situation. I do not want that to happen in this town or in any town, but especially to our residents.
But if you send one person to that call, you're opening up yourself to serious liability and concern for the safety of that officer. I would not ever send any one of my officers alone.
No, I know that.
I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying that's our biggest concern is we have very little coverage on weekends, and we shouldn't have to wait, or anybody shouldn't have to wait for forty-five minutes or...
So I, I want to shoot back to you and let you finish, and then we'll open up some discussion.
Well, I just, I'm trying to remember. Originally, it wasn't, it was a floating timeframe for patrols, because when we first got on the board, they were here at nighttime. It wasn't just daytime.
We were, if I remember correctly, we were having to make like special requests?
Yeah.
Like if we got a lot of complaints from residents, like of...
Certain areas.
I believe we had noise complaints from a Select Board Member partying going on out on, I forget the name, off Barbers Farm.
Right.
And so we had asked for coverage, like, can you guys go check that, patrol that, but it was really more request-driven.
But it was like a couple weeks a week. I mean, it wasn't, and it was a random situation that we never sat one day in a Friday or whatever.
It sounds, it sounds like, it, it sounds to me like we can certainly sit down with you and Ross because he's, well, he's your patrol commander, is that what he said?
Correct.
It certainly sounds like that, you know, and tonight's not the night to do it because, you know, we need to figure this out, right, all of us? But it certainly sounds like we can sit down with you guys at some point, and I'm not sure if, if Ms. Peters would be involved in this or not, but in order, yeah, so... But it certainly sounds like we can identify sometimes when we say, okay, look, this is what we'd like to try, okay? We, we don't want you here every day from, we'd love, let me rephrase that. We'd love to have you here every day from seven to three-thirty, right? But let's face it, things don't happen every day from seven to three-thirty.
As for myself, who I've patrolled down here since I came on with James, um, it's been during the daytime, um, and it's a lot of, you know, I've been written a lot of tickets, I've stopped a lot of people, stopped a lot of cars. I've stopped a lot of vehicles that shouldn't be in your community, if you understand what I'm saying, and there's only one reason why they're in your community. Uh, the sheriff backed me up on one of those traffic stops. Um, but there is definitely the need to expand, to be here from the five o'clock hour, um, to, to whenever.
Wait, and I, you know, like, my, look at it, and I'm not, I'm not a law enforcement officer, obviously, right? But I can, I can say, okay, look at, we need you guys, we'd like to have you guys here two nights a week and it can rotate because, because if you're every Friday night and every Thursday night, well, who's gonna do a shit on Friday or Thursday?
That's a pattern.
Right?
Right.
So if you're random and rotated around, but it sounds like we can do that. It sounds like you're open to that.
Oh, for sure. I mean, we're...
I'm not sure we had that in the past with the, you know...
My, my concern is if, if I have a deputy here, I want two. Um, I want one to be able to back up the other one, um, in case you do go to that domestic. You know, domestics are the most dangerous things for law enforcement officers to respond to.
And, and, and not only that, um, and this isn't the only conversation we're having with you. We're having this with Stanford and/or with Reedsboro because, uh, as we discussed in Reedsboro, Dr. Peters and I, um, you drive through the beautiful town of Reedsboro, one, you're lucky if you have cell phone reception, and two, you're lucky if you can call out on a radio. And so if you have, um...
You have that, right?
Yes. And with that being said, you know, like we heard in most towns, you know, but we don't have that type of crime until...
It happens.
You do. And with that being said, um, you know, it's, it's hard to say, I'm gonna put my finger on this and between this hour and this hour, the only thing you're gonna have to handle would be VIN checks, barking dog complaints, neighborly disputes, and a few motor vehicle incidents. However, the world doesn't work that way. So, um, like in Stanford, last week, Stanford said the same thing to us, and the very next day or the day after, it was in the news where Stanford had a massive hit and run and, uh, motor vehicle...
Nine AM.
At nine AM. And it was, it was, uh, and then there was a response from a, a, a member of the Stanford Select Board saying, okay, you got us to eat our words, our words to that effect. And that's not what we're trying to do, but what we're trying to do is, is we're trying to operate in the safest, most effective manner possible to serve you the most effective way possible. Yeah. the most effective way possible. Yeah.
That's what we're looking for, right?
Right.
All looking for that.
Right.
I will say, it's a breath of fresh air that you're willing to reach out to other agencies, because past leadership didn't do that. I know that, because I asked that question directly when.
Yeah, I'm gonna throw a little analogy out on that. If I'm in this uniform, and I'm in trouble, I don't care if it's a fireman that shows up.
A Boy Scout.
I don't care who shows up. And that's always been our feeling. I came from the Bennington Police Department, I would run from Powell if they were in trouble. And I would go up there. And, you know, it's the same, the relationship with Manchester PD, the relationship with the state police is very strong. There's a little tension between us and Bennington, but that, that'll resolve itself shortly.
But, you know, working collaboratively with the Vermont State Police, I know that both Ross and I can say, from the highest levels, that we are, we, we believe in the Vermont State Police, just like we believe in the Bennington County Sheriff's Department. We believe in the people of Powell to communicate with both organizations, to effectively share information, so we can solve the problems that are plaguing this community. And the state police, with the county sheriff's department, are beginning to blend their silos together, so we can work collaboratively to solve these problems. The thing that is my reality, I, I don't want to use concerns, I want to say the term reality. The realities are that if we are no longer in this picture, we are a contracted service. And if we are working so diligently between now and then, and we're really, within three weeks, we are, we're working hard for you guys. And we're scared that we're not gonna have this. So here's all this hard work to be pulled out from underneath us, and then what? So, I mean, that's my reality.
And it's, it's definitely, if I were in your shoes, I'd have the same concern, okay? Because, like I said five minutes ago, rumors fly everywhere. I mean, I mean, look, look at, there's people out there that already have this position hired, right? There's people already out there that, that already know, or think they know, that, that we already have a constable hired. You know what? Not true. Okay, first off, we don't have voter approval to do it. Plain and simple. And then there's a whole process. There's, right? There's a whole process of it.
Well.
If it were to happen. And, and, and even if, who knows where it's gonna go? We don't know.
And that's, and that's not, that's not for us, that's not for us to say, that's for your taxpayer, or your, your, your voting population to say. But what I can say, sitting in this chair, wearing this uniform, is that I bring to the table copious amounts of certified, squared-away, connected law enforcement officers who are willing to work with all parties involved, not just within our walls. Number two, I'm covering all liabilities. Because, you know, I pick up the phone, and I call Vermont League Cities and Towns, just like you do, and I ask those questions to Trevor Whipple, who's in charge of insurance. And I understand that it's a concern, and they have a slight worry about constables, and their accountability. With us, we pay approximately $150,000 in insurance, including workman's comp. So, that is not a stress that this town, or this community's taxpayer has to worry about. The infrastructure of our organization is in place. I don't believe there's one setup here yet, I could be wrong. The equipment, the fingerprinting, the data master, the, the radio communication infrastructure, that's, that's all a burden and a cost that we provide, and we just ask for the hourly rate. Now, yes, have I asked every single town? Have I had to increase my hourly rate based on my operations expense? Absolutely. I've had to. But with that being said, I still think that it is a very reasonable cost, and I think it's also, I would say, very cost-effective for, again, only me saying, the taxpayers of Powell to consider us, the sheriff's department that is already established and in place, versus the years, or the future years laid out, or the, the unknowns that are out there for the constable, for the town of Powell. Now, please, you have to forgive me, I'm a cheerleader for my organization. I, I speak very highly of our staff, and I know that we can get it done, and I know that we can suit your needs, with all that aside. But.
There, there'd be a serious problem if you weren't.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And let's face it, right? I think you know me well enough, no, I don't pull a lot of punches, and it's just, it's that simple, you know? So, if you weren't a cheerleader for your own organization, three weeks into, or however long, it's been about three weeks.
Yeah.
If you weren't, if you weren't a cheerleader at right now, if I was, if I was Ross, I'd be put it out the door. And I don't know if you rode with you or not, but, okay.
I mean, I, I would, I would say that we're, you know, and again, as I've noted in numerous conversations, both public and private, I will not throw stones at my predecessor, that's not what I'm going to do, that's not what I will do. Nor anybody who decided to leave, because there's no hard feelings, because I still hold on most, if not all, in high regard. What I will say is, is that the, the direction that we are in, or the channel that we are in, is strictly at the purpose of serving the people of Powell well, most effectively, most, within the most cost-effective means possible, because everything is expensive out there. I mean, my wife and I, within our household, everything is getting expensive. I would say the same thing for you all. So, in a perfect world, I would love to keep our, our costs at where they are, but everything that I'm paying into, just in insurances, it's gone up approximately $20,000. Our communications have gone up immensely. And hiring qualified staff, I'm not paying, just so that you know, there were those that were being paid lower than what McDonald's pays now, carrying a gun. That's wrong. And that's scary. And I will not do that. I've already had that conversation with our administrative staff, as well as Jude Chauncey and Carolyn Graves, who could not make it this evening. And, and that is not applicable. So, the bodies that I'm hiring are going to be based on the hourly wage, because I'm going to continue to train them, I'm gonna continue to serve them as well, in order to retain them, because everybody is stealing from each other, that being law enforcement. So, in order for us to retain solid core groups of officers, both men and women, who are willing to put their life on the line, 1440's not gonna cut it.
And I'm a firm believer in, I'm a firm believer in the retention part of it. Because, because if you have, if you have one of your officers who works, and I don't care if they work in Reedsboro, or Stanford, or wherever you're at, if they're in that certain area for an extended length of time, they learn, right, the ins and outs of the people who were there, right?
Oh, yeah, you get to know your, yes, of course. You know, hey, listen, I've been up in the Byron one too many times, and hearing from both Matt and Mark in regards to how this was done, and that wasn't done right, and et cetera, and they're right.
No.
Yeah, I, and, and you have to, you have to build, as, and again, I'm gonna go back to these three core groups, because this is what we all stand on within the sheriff's department, or if not, most of us. I would say, trust character competency.
Yes.
Can you do what you say you can do? So, if we say we will be here during the evening hours, and if that's what we can commit to with a contract, and if that's what you would like, that's what we will do. Our character, we are, we will, and I require my staff, and I know Ross does, and both Dr. Peters does, Lieutenant Harrington, both Dr. Peters, we also hold each other and our staff in high regard. Their integrity is important. Because if you're out doing something that you should not be doing, are you going to get the trust of your community or communities? And if they don't trust you, why would they talk to you and share any types of intelligence with you, and to know that what you're saying, that, that information is being dealt with accordingly, and it's being handled properly? Because we're at the moment, and we're in the, in the timeframe, where if you're sharing information against a group, or a, a person, or a group, they could seriously harm you or kill you. And that's what we're in now. So, again, in order just to move forward, and to effectively do what we need to do, those are the three areas of interest that we have to focus on, and that's what we are. So, I, sometimes I, I write short sermons, but I tend to get away with myself, so I apologize. It's just the father in me, you know? So, sometimes I speak too much.
My kids are grown up, so I'm a lot more quieter now.
I'm envious.
It doesn't matter, trust me.
So, again, I apologize for being too long-winded, but this is something that I'm passionate about, and.
I think, I think it's great. I, I think it's a really super solid thing, because, I think the rumors need to be quelled on, on a lot of things that are going on. There's just, there's just too much of that that goes on to start with. And not just with this, we do, you know, the select board, we, we deal with it all the time. And not just, go ahead, Tara, sure.
Sorry, I'm over here now. Do you say the contract might be changing? Is that something you plan on, like, June, or?
Well, right now, our contract expires at the last day, I'm sorry, the first day of July. However, we have contracts in Stanford and Reedsboro, for an example, that expire the first day of February. And instead of us saying, you know, too bad, so sad, we've been going into Stanford and Reedsboro, as well as other areas of interest. So, they too have time to communicate and collaborate, and, because they do want our services. So, instead of pressuring them, in order to force them, okay, listen, or, listen, we're not going to serve you, so we're out. We've been there every week.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I mean, we've been, we've been fulfilling our obligations, even though there's still nothing on paper.
Okay. And you're prob, likely going to increase that quickly, right?
I will have to increase that, yes. Yes, I will increase that.
And we have one other question. If the town approved an appointed constable, and we kept the sheriff's contract, is there an opportunity for a sort of partnership, or you working with the constables?
I would say, if that is the route that Powell goes, that's something that I have to sit down and think about.
Okay.
Right? That's, that's something that, because now I'm getting into a concern of, you know, liability. Another area of concern would be, are they using my facility? Another area of concern, I mean, I, so I mean, just right here and now, there's a lot of questions that I have, yes. I mean, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of unknowns for us to hear at this point. It's just something I was curious.
Yeah, thank you.
This would be a lot of logistic things that we've got to work on between the two.
I mean, starting out, starting, starting out on a law enforcement, and please don't take this the wrong way, there are a lot of communities that, that are looking for more cost-effective ways to serve their community, to offer that safety. However, it is, it is very difficult, and it's costly. There are a lot of intricacies that need to be met, like a simple ORI number.
Mm-hmm.
You're dealing with the federal government on that. That, just that one thing alone is extremely tasking, and there, and there is no book that you can buy and open up and say, how to start a police department?
No, certainly isn't.
It's a lot, yeah. So, I mean.
She's investigated.
Yeah, it's, it's, yes, yes. I mean.
Absolutely.
I think we're good, we're good.
I really appreciate you coming in.
I thank you for having us.
I hope we've quelled some of your concerns.
Well, and I hope, I hope that we opened up the door to continue the collaboration between the two of us. We are very easy to work with, we're not here to create a problem or disruption. We just want to continue to serve you, because we are now getting phone calls from Arlington, and other areas, possibly, other areas of interest within the town of Bennington are now starting to develop for us, that were never there before. So, we also have only so many staff.
Right.
And that's why we want to commit to those who've committed to us.
Well, I don't think, I don't think the door's ever been shut, or even partially closed.
Right.
Okay? I, you know, at least for me. And I, I don't speak for the whole board, each, each person here has their own ideas, and that's how I, that's how I operate, and that's how I run our, our board and our town. But I'm pretty positive that the door's never been shut, it's never been partially closed, I don't think it's ever moved off the stopper. It's just.
I'm gonna hold you to it, Mike.
Hold me to it. That's, that's who I am. And, you know, I, like I, like I said, I, I think we, it's some, some things that have been there for a while, some concerns, you know, in the past. And I, and I think it was just so, to, to open up and look at some options.
Yes.
See what the options were, okay? And I think having a, having an appointed constable, if you watch, if you watched on the 13th.
We're watching, we're watching.
The informational meeting that we had, and we're gonna have another one on Monday, the 27th. I think, I think we tried to explain why we, as a board, feel that an appointed constable is more effective, and I'm not gonna get into it tonight, because we got a meeting on the 27th, but why we feel an appointed constable is, is much better for the town than, than an elected constable. So, that's where that comes from. That, that has nothing to do with anything else. We, you know, the appointed versus elected is totally separate from the rest of it.
And that actually was on the ballot a couple of years ago.
Right. And it never got explained, and that's partially my fault, too, because we didn't explain it elbow.
We weren't on the board then.
Yeah, I think we were.
Yeah. We had a lot of things on our plate at that time, so.
Oh, okay.
I don't think we were focused on.
We weren't. And we, and.
We've learned a lot.
Anyways, that's, that's beside the point. If you watched the 27th, or if you watched the 13th meeting that we had, did we record that? We did, right?
Yes.
It, it'll explain for sure where we are, we're coming from with that, so.
And just so that you know where, I should say, when we depart, I want you to know that we are still, we are digging deep. And I know that there are those that are watching, and I know that we want to get together with Craig Odell's group, with, because I know that they're watching this now, along with the state police, because they are paying attention. And we are going to continue to dig and find the people that are acting in an unlawful manner, who are not only that, but who are trafficking copious amounts of dangerous drugs, as well as guns.
Yes.
Into this community. And we are going to continue that. And we will keep you posted with what we can. So.
I think, I, I.
I'm, I'm really trying to be careful what I say.
So, we appreciate.
I think, I think a line of communication, James, is huge. I, you know, even if it's just to Tara, or just to me, or one of the board members, just kinda, hey, look at, we're working, you know, I understand that you can't just say, hey, we're working on, you know, 37 Center Street, because it's, all right, and I don't even know if that's a number, again, whatever, okay? I totally get that. Then you say, hey, well, you know, this is what we're doing right now, this is kinda where we're focusing on, you know? I think that goes a long ways.
Yeah, okay.
And in my book, and I think every, you know, all of us would say the same thing.
So, would you prefer that I send Tara the email, and I CC you, sir, or would you? Because, I mean, you're the chair.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably the board chair. I mean, that could change and merge. But, no, I think, I think that's, I think that's good. What do you guys think? Is that something you're all comfortable with?
I'm fine with that.
Bob? You've been pretty quiet over there.
Well, I, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think we've always had a good relationship with the Bennington County Sheriff's Department. All options are on the table, as far as I'm concerned. We still need to go through all of our pros and cons, and our costs. And that's just something we have to do as a board.
I would like to ask you, before you leave tonight, to, at a future board meeting, even before the contract expires, where we sit down, and, and I don't know if we do it as a board, or if we do it as a small committee, where we can talk about the hours of patrol. Because I've been sitting here for three years, and we've never discussed that. We've never discussed hours of patrol with.
Well, with ass, and I said, no.
You know, I'd, I'd like to, you know, at a future board meeting, I'd really like to sit down with whoever you want to bring.
Okay.
You know, that, you know your staff.
I can most certainly start the conversation tomorrow. I can most certainly start the conversation tomorrow with an email, articulating or, you know, providing a preliminary sense of of what we would like to do. And then obviously, your feedback is paramount. So at least we can start that line of communication. So when we sit down, we have something that's in place so nobody's getting ghosted or so you all know what's happening or what the circumstance is. Yes, I mean, it's I'm just trying to be as transparent as possible.
I understand that, and I appreciate that. You know, I I just think I just think that, you know, if we were able to discuss some of those different
Yeah.
random hours, just the change that, you know, our seven to three thirty every day.
Right.
One one thing that I'm gonna ask you guys while you're sitting right here, and I've asked this a million times, and I'm gonna ask it as not as the select board chair. I'm gonna ask it as the the manager due for. I have I have an incredible problem of cars passing my school buses.
Okay, so.
Route seven at Winchester's? I'm gonna tell you right now, if you station the person down there, an officer down there, you could pay their salary.
It's funny, one of the biggest things, and this is why James chuckled, is that's one of the things that I look for trying to figure out the bus route. I usually catch the bus that's, I comes north power on three forty six, then comes up off three forty six and pulls out by Winchester's. So I I don't know if you talked to the bus drivers or who drives that bus. I've been behind it quite a few times looking. I have not had anybody run them yet.
Yeah, we were talking about that, actually.
If you sit if you sit at Winchester's at six thirty five in the morning when they're picking up on Route seven and you back up in there a little bit, I'm telling you, you could mind the cars.
I I'm telling you, I guarantee it.
They will not like those tickets.
Oh, no.
So my question is, when you write a ticket on Route seven.
Goes to the state.
Goes to the state.
Well, this is this is a difference of opinion.
Not that I don't want you to, I'm just asking.
Well, the difference of, so.
I I know what she go ahead. I'm sorry. You might be answering my question.
So there's that pretty little sign that says stay highway begins. I'm still writing any tickets in Powell and anything but the fifty mile an hour zone under ten oh seven until I get screamed at by the DMV, the judiciary board. I'm gonna I'm gonna do that. The fifty mile an hour zone is I write under ten eighty one B, which is a local basic rule.
Right.
For fifty mile an hour zone. It's only two points, even though how fast you're going, it doesn't change two points. And that keeps more funds for the town. But I really expect to get my hands left.
Well, I was wondering, is is Wallingford, they are on seven. And I don't know the actual verbiage, maybe you guys do. But if it's a village designation, like where we have the forty mile an hour zones on seven in Powell Center and then down by Dwyer's and the Mass Line, shouldn't that money be designated to the town? Because those are designated areas and it's a reduced speed. So I can understand the fifty mile an hour.
It's what it's identified as by the state.
By the state.
Do you know how the town can reach out to have an identifier? Have you heard of anything like that?
Let me let me work on that and I'll and I'll.
I was just curious.
You know, that's that's a that's a debate I've had for years.
Right. I mean, we 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 certainly went through this discussion in Bennington when we were both in Bennington P V, because we do know that, you know, every every, like, for instance, if it's a hundred, again, this could have changed, but for every hundred and five dollar ticket that is written, I believe the town gets forty dollars or forty one approximately, forty one dollars. That number may have changed. But on the last time I checked, for instance, the state would get sixty approximately and the town would get forty approximately. If it's all drafted in the state, because it's 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 no different than a stop sign. For instance, if you have your local ordinances and you have a stop sign that is considered a town stop sign, we would write that under a local ordinance or a ten oh eight, and that money would go back to you. If it's drafted or written under a ten forty eight or it's a stop sign that is considered by the state.
Governed by the state.
Governed by the state. If it's written in a Title twenty three V S A ten forty eight, it would all those funds would go back to the state. So we are very understanding of the fact that just like every town administrator or every town manager that we serve or work with, we have to understand that there is revenue there that's at your disposal. And we know that that is a because that helps fund certain things within that overall budget within your community, and we are aware of that. So we are, it's we too have had these conversations in the last two weeks. So and it's not just you guys. It's also the other communities.
We have, I imagine there's nothing that can be brought up here that we haven't had discussions on already. And I was just talking about when I was F T O ing deputy that had, well, eventually get on the road. I told him ten eighty one B. That way more money is left for the town that's paying us
Right.
versus the state.
Yeah. So with that being said, we are aware that, you know, please don't take this the wrong way. Of course, we're not going to create a speed trap and hammer, 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 kind of like certain communities that are out there in the state without being said on a recorded, you know. But we understand that we too also have to find the balance. It's not just a a take and nothing coming back. We are aware of that.
Yeah, there's a new, there's a new way, and it was a training that I recently went to for law enforcement.
Get you those limits.
Where just going out, writing a ticket, walking up to a ticket with a ticket and explaining how they can contest a ticket and going on the way doesn't work as far as going and then educating the person. You're doing seventy one in a fifty mile an hour, traveling two and a half car lengths behind a car in front of you. You know, you you tell them, you know, for every ten miles an hour of speed, there has to be a car lane. You know, people think that's crazy, but I'm, you know, that's what I've done for the last ten years is.
Followed too closely. Yeah, I mean, that's a great interdiction stop. That's what we used to.
You know, there's
But never.
Education on the traffic stop followed a lot of times by a written warning. And if you just explain to them why.
Right.
You know, the the education part is goes a lot further sometimes than just throwing a ticket at them. And then, you know, taking a person who's running late for work, who's already in a bad mood and making them even worse.
Yeah.
You know.
Just to find that balance.
Well, thank you so.
Well, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say I I agree totally. And of course, one of the one of the things we have to be wary of is we don't want to be addicted to the to the money that's coming in. Because the real truth is we're doing our jobs correctly if people aren't breaking the law. And so and that's and that's where we want to end up. We don't want to, we don't want to look at it as an opportunity to make money. And and that's not what I heard. What I heard was we want to curb behavior.
Right.
And and that's 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 the right approach, in my in my opinion. Yeah, but there's no excuse for passing a school bus. That's a ticket all day long.
Enjoy that one.
And when people stop doing that, we will have succeeded.
That's right.
Correct.
I love that. I love that too. So trust me.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Peters, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Nice to meet you, sir.
Thanks, boss.
All right.
It's nice to meet you.
Hey, it's great seeing you again.
Yeah. Little bit different hours.
You know how to get older, me. If you.
Nice to see you again. Thank you.
You can you can go to email and Tara, you know, she's really good about communicating with us. So use her. She's she's awesome about the communication.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, sorry, guys. But it was it was very informative.
No, this is good Peyton Green. I'm glad we had an opportunity to speak with them.
Absolutely. How's that?
I am. I'm running the meeting and.
No, I know. I know. A lot of stuff going on there.
While you're doing all that. So did you look at the audit proposal? We had one submission for the R F P. It's from R H R Smith. It is for seventeen thousand dollars for the F Y twenty two fiscal audit.
Did Ellen say if we've used them in the past before?
No, we have not used them before, but this is the company that many of the local agencies who lost the company we were previously using.
Okay.
Went to this company. So that's where we got their name from and.
Plus, they're the only one.
Yeah, and we did meet with them and they seemed very reputable. They seemed very confident. They actually wanted to come in throughout the year to look at records instead of waiting till the end and.
What a concept.
We had a good conversation with Riley, myself and Ellen talked to them and they seemed.
That's what we were hoping for anyways. That's what the whole purpose of us for the auditing positions.
So I'm gonna ask you the a question that you and Ellen seem very comfortable with this. What is our, I don't have.
Our.
R H R Smith and Company.
You're you're very comfortable with them on the surface?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Tara on this?
I do. Just I just want to get a perspective of it of how much we've paid in the past. I just don't remember how much.
Like last year, I think was sixteen thousand, so it's comparable.
Yeah, oh, that's good.
Yeah.
It did sound like it sounded, it sounded quite reasonable, but.
That's what I thought. I thought we were I thought we were up in the twenties.
And if the board boards will choose is hopefully, you know, the first year, see how it goes. And then hopefully we can just contract with them for a longer period of time so we don't have to keep going out to bid.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
Could we could we put that into the contract at this point?
Probably, yes. And and honestly, I was told when I first started this process that at some point when we did away with internal auditors, the external auditors, we weren't supposed to have to go out to bid because I I think Bonadilla was going to just carry that contract.
Well, that's what our understanding was at the time.
Right. So I think we can sort of do the same thing with them and then.
What what do you think about that, Bob? Do you think we should try to write that into this contract here? Will we keep them, you know, we have the option if to to keep them on board for three more years or or rather than doing this every single year?
Um, I I I honestly don't know what the pros and cons of that are. And I would want to do some research before I I voice an opinion on it.
Okay.
I can see that there there's definitely some to say that we could just further the contract also means that they there has to be some kind of, how much of an increase would we take year over year?
Right.
Yeah.
And it may be tied to an index, probably tied to an index versus a a year to year contract. I'm not sure what what else would be, whether or not that would raise or lower the cost. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a, there's just some questions that I would have. And I think they're kind of basic questions. I just don't feel comfortable enough to give you an opinion on that right now.
No, that's understandable.
And the other thing, this is their first year with us. Do we want to see what we get after their audit?
I was kind of. Then go from there.
Yeah, and then we can talk that with them.
Well, I think there's ways to build into a into a contract if they didn't perform very well, we can.
Oh, I'm sure.
But whatever. No, I understand. Let's, okay, so let's, I guess we're gonna go out to bid again next year and.
Well, yeah.
Or, you know, on R F P at least anyway.
So I make a motion to forward with R H R Smith's proposal for seventeen thousand for our audit.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
So carried.
So the roadside trash and solid waste ordinance stuff. We've had some issues arise recently with a lot of trash on the sides of the road. We've had some volunteers going out cleaning it up. And then if it's a town road, the town has been picking it up. With that said, we are placing cameras. So.
Thank you.
If people see the town picking up trash and think, oh, great, I can just dump my trash now and the town will pick it up. If that is not the case, you will be fined. So please spread the word that we are putting the cameras up. We will be prosecuting anybody who dumps garbage on the side of the road. With that said, the state did come down and clean much of the highway. They've gotten quite a bit.
They've been there three days.
Looking pretty good.
Well, they could be facing a state fine as well as a town.
I think I think that we should we should email back to the sheriff's department what our ordinances are.
Yeah.
Because I'm not sure that the new sheriff would have.
The updated ones.
Be updated on on what our ordinances are, the cover ordinance, our trash ordinance and that kind of stuff.
And that we're enforcing through the judicial bureau now?
I also, I also, that's right. We are, as a town, now set up through the the judicial bureau. Some of us have numbers.
You do, and Leonard does.
Right, to to initiate these fines. So.
I don't know where I was going with the next, the the solid waste ordinance. So we had.
You go.
A number of houses that have been numerous complaints about. So we sent out notices to those people with the ordinance flyer with certified mail so we could prove they got it, they are aware of the ordinance, they know they're in violation. So my question is to you guys, should we now send Mike to issue a violation ticket? Mike?
I'm I'm.
I don't know.
This is this is where I was gonna go with this for right now. Okay, honestly. Because because we don't have, we have not discussed who should or shouldn't go out and and issue the tickets. Me as the zoning administrator, I do have a number to initiate to to write tickets. And I have a ticket book in my truck. Leonard has a ticket book in his truck and he has a number to write tickets. I am more than willing at this time to be the person who goes and writes the tickets. I'm I'm totally fine with this. However, how, you know, until until we figure out as a board how we're gonna fund it. And and I'll go right on the record now and saying it's, look at, you know, there's no money for it. So I'm doing it for free, basically, you know, for my selectmen salary. But being the board chair, I'm fine. I'm fine with being the person that goes out and writes the tickets. I think we've done due diligence on some of these places. I think we have sent, and and my name hasn't been at the bottom of the letter anyways.
Yeah.
We we've sent out letters to several habitual offenders or or constant, excuse me, you know, places. So their time is up, their thirty days, I think that we give them thirty days, right? Their their thirty days are up. Now it's time. And and I'm glad this is on here tonight because there there's only, there's only one way. There's only one way that we're gonna clean up these places. Or or deter anybody else from creating the same situation.
Right.
Is we have to find them.
Yeah, if we don't do enforcement.
I'm not a huge person to to create hardship on somebody. But look at, we gave you thirty days to clean up, you know, and and that's right. And some of the places that have the thirty days also have had the letters and our flyers, and it's not just a letter that goes out. I want to be perfectly clear with this. It's not just a letter. Here's your letter of violation. Okay, our ordinance goes out with it, right? And and, you know, the the information package that that we put together a few months ago, go out with these letters, you know? So it's not, it really shouldn't come as a surprise. It's going to for a little while. It's going to.
Right, but that was our goal all along, we could attempt to educate first.
Yeah.
Even when we send out a violation, I mean, that's what we discussed. So there would be no surprises, even though they're gonna be, like you say, with some people.
So he can write the ticket. He can also make it a zoning violation that gets recorded on there, you know, in our land records with Julie. With that said, there are some instances where it is a tenant who has built up the garbage. And we've had. built up the garbage and we've had landlords reach out and say, you know, what do I do now? They've either filled my gar, my dumpster and other people can't get rid of their trash or, um, we have another situation where people are just getting the property back into their possession. The person's still living there. If we get volunteers or whatever to go clean up that mess, my concern is it's just going to continue. Because the renter or the tenant doesn't have anything to lose.
Right, and they're still there.
Yes, and they're still there. So yeah, putting a violation on the landowner or the property owner isn't.
But he's also collecting rent.
Right.
Um, and the one circumstance I'm thinking of, no, there's one circumstance, yes. So it's, it's, it's a little tricky to navigate those pieces.
Well, the, the one circumstance that we're talking about, the people are, they own their property and rent a lot.
Right.
So we could.
Potentially put a lien.
Put a lien on their, on their, on that one. The other one with the tenant only that rents.
Yeah.
That, that puts a, that puts a damper in it. So I think, I think we really need to discuss as a board how we're going to. And I'm not sure tonight's the night, because I think it needs, I need, I think it needs some, some research. But what do we do in that situation where a tenant is?
The culprit?
Uh, right, is the culprit of, of the garbage or the trash or, you know, or solid waste. So let's go solid waste, okay? Right, let's go solid waste for, because God forbid. How do you hold the, the landlord or the owner? But the landlord and the owner is collecting rent, but in this one situation that we're dealing with right now, the new owner or, or soon-to-be new owner.
Is evicting.
Is evicting and they're, and they're, they're acquiring, re-acquiring this. Like, I think probably more or less against the will, so to speak, but they are. So how do we hold that landlord and owner accountable? How do we put a lien logistically? So I think it's, I think it may be a case-by-case basis.
But wouldn't that person that is acquiring that land, that property, know what it looks like when they go after that property to acquire it?
They do. And so there have been a lot, there's been a lot of talk around town about it and someone said to me, oh, I have volunteers in a truck and we're gonna go get all that trash or household waste or whatever, whatever you wanna call it, solid waste.
Just like the animal control officer, sound officer.
Because it wouldn't cost the town anything, but I don't wanna send them to do that if there's no, nothing keeping that person from continuing to do it, you know what I mean? Like.
Right.
So maybe we have to, maybe we come up with some sort of an agreement to, to the land, or landowner, the, the property owner and we say.
Maybe they could buy trash, garbage removal.
Okay.
One time.
What, we're, we're, we, we feel that we can come in here.
Or pray.
One time. And I, you know, on this one certain piece of property and, and we file that with Julie. Right, and, and we'd have to check this out and make sure it's a legal thing, but we file that with Julie and say, okay, we're gonna come in. We have the volunteers, we're gonna, they're gonna clean up the trash, solid waste, slap me now. We're gonna clean up the solid waste. They're gonna take it to the transfer station or to a seller or wherever we take it, maybe probably to the transfer station. And if it reappears, then you will become, we will hold you accountable. You will get a letter for another thirty-day letter, right? And then after, uh, you know, and if you do not clean it up within that thirty days, then we will find you and we will attach a lien on your property.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That does make sense. Yep.
So I, I think, uh, some of this has to be covered by statute, right? There has to be some laws that cover you, what your responsibilities are when you're a renter, when you're a landlord. Um, and I, and I think I've heard a couple of different, uh, a couple of different scenarios here. One is where the ownership of the property is actually changing. Another one is an eviction where the ownership is not changing, but, uh, but the renter, uh, is being evicted for whatever reason.
They're, they're, they're the same, the same scenario.
Right.
The.
It's the same property actually.
Same property, Bob.
You're talking about a specific property, okay?
Yes, ownership is changing and they're gonna attempt to evict, but, um, yeah.
But.
And then a different one is renting and owns the property, but rents the lot, I guess is the way to put that.
Just like at Texas, if there's a.
But we, we just need to be careful that we're, we're in, we're in compliance with whatever the, whatever the, I'm sure there's state statutes that talk about that, uh, talk about what the, what the responsibilities are. Uh, that's it. Um, I just wanna make sure that we're, uh, and, and you, you mentioned it too, Mike. We, we need to make sure that it, it needs to, we, we need to make sure that we're legal or whatever.
Right, right.
Absolutely.
Um, I did wanna back up a little bit to.
A question for the L C D.
Uh, to the letter, to the, to the litter as well. Um, I know when we first talked about that portion of the ordinance, we were talking about signage. So, um, I'm not a big fan of, uh, uh, you know, the, the please-don't-litter signs. But if we have an ordinance that says we're, you know, uh, litter first offense is two hundred and fifty dollars, I think a sign like that would be a deterrent.
There is signage on seven.
Yes, and three forty-six.
And three forty-six.
But those, I, I, I think, I think, and, and our road crew can make signs. I'm pretty, they can make the road signs. I think we have them.
They order them.
I think, I think we have, I think we order, I think you're right, Bob. I think we order maybe half a dozen road signs or, or ten or whatever we wanna order.
One for every problem area.
And, and we, we slap these signs up. Have our road crew put these signs up and, you know, now.
And I definitely agree with the cameras going up and being changed periodically.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Definitely.
Especially in favela areas.
So.
Yeah, and I've, I've said this before and I'll say it again, whoever's going to inspect an area or issue a ticket or whatever, let somebody else know when you're going.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, don't go by yourself.
Just, just because, I mean, and I told you before, if you know you're going into an, an area, just give me a call and whether you want me to be on the horn or whether you want me to.
These ears on.
Show up, I mean.
That's, that's one reason.
It's just, we gotta cover our, our Easter.
So I'm, I'm, if, if the board is, is okay with me being the person right now for the solid waste ordinance, writing the tickets, I'm fine doing that.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
I don't think we need a motion, do we?
No.
No, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
You're already a, a sign us.
I already have a number.
To Jamie's point, don't go alone.
No.
Yeah.
And so since there, since there isn't currently money, any requests to pay for any garbage removal and stuff is a no-go at this time, right? I've had a, I've had a request to, um, yeah, help out with a dumpster, an extra dumpster pickup because of the amount of trash that was.
I don't wanna see the town go down that path, because we do it for one person, we gotta do it for everybody.
Everybody.
That's the thing is.
It's, it's so tricky, it's a, oh.
This is, this is a really, this is a really hard one. This is, this is a really hard situation to, to deal with because, um, we have, we have a landlord who is really trying to clean up the operation. And then we have tenants who are um, fighting the situation, I guess, right, Tara?
Making it difficult.
Making it, making it extremely difficult for the landlord to clean this up. Because financially, there's a, it's a, it's a burden. And, and I mean, we, I know it's a burden. It's, and, you know, Fred's been involved in this too, okay, it's not.
Yeah.
I just mean, right, I'm sure.
Doesn't Fred have a ticket book also?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's.
But it's the.
No, I'm just putting it out there that.
They received the letter, they are, they did move the trash, but it filled the dumpster.
And that person is asking for us to help with the dumpster removal, correct?
Yes. Yep.
So that's, I've been doing some, I've reached out to a couple towns and nobody's really gotten back to me yet. Um, I don't know what the verbiage is, but I think that we need to set up, um, a mount and a line item in our budget for next year specifically for this issue, for a case-by-case issue that we can help somebody. I mean, I don't wanna.
I'm reluctant to go down that path. If we have to bear the burden, I think we should then be attaching a lien to recover our costs.
Well, I think, so here's, here's why, here's what I've been just thinking about this right now. Okay, we have that fund that.
The seventeen thousand.
Yeah, whatever.
Nineteen and change.
Yeah, we have that, we have that fund of, of ni- whatever it is, okay? So, so maybe to, to try to keep that a sustaining fund, maybe we look into, and this obviously needs some research.
Right.
Maybe we look into using that fund for situations like this. But our fine money, if people pay their fines.
Go back into the fund.
Comes back into the fund to try to keep that as a, you know.
A revolving.
Going revolving.
Revolving. And I'm not saying keep the whole thing, just a little bit.
Okay, right.
And it could be.
Where else would we go? Where else would we go?
Right.
But if you do it again, we, we charge you for that first time, or something like that.
Even thinking if somebody is really hard off, can't afford to take trash or whatever, if they went to transfer station and said, look at, I have this trash that I need to get rid of and I can't afford it. Is there something that we can do where they can like go pick up trash on the side of the road or something for the town to?
Some form of community service.
Community service to help with that. And I also, um, with checking with the towns, like with the trash that's thrown on the side of the road and stuff, if they have people that from their transfer stations that go out and get it or from their road crew that go out and get it. And, um, so far I've heard back, it's the road crew because most transfer stations don't have the manpower to send somebody out to pick up trash. I do know that this week I asked the gentleman to pick up um, a couch and a, um, mattress. So you're talking forty dollars for the mattress and the couch is fifteen, is that correct?
Looks like, yeah.
So, I mean, that's cost to the town that we are absorbing.
Right.
But it doesn't need to stain on the side of the road and the mattress has been there for quite a long time.
But you're paying two people to pick that up and load it in the truck.
It's a hundred bucks.
It's a hundred bucks.
That's what I'm saying. You look at the whole thing and then.
Right.
Right.
It is costing the town money.
So I think what I, what I'm gonna ask you to do is.
I need to find out the legality of that fund.
That's, that's right. Research some of that out, whether we can take that fund.
Yeah.
And use that and whether we can take fine money.
And put it back.
And put it back into that fund to keep that fund, um, revolving and, and keep it, you know, um, you know, as, as long as we can keep it.
And if we could do like a community servicing for somebody that can't.
Uh, I think that's a great idea. I'd like to look into that too.
I mean, I know that we all know what the place that we're talking about. I mean, if they can't afford trash, they certainly could afford to go on the side of the road and pick up trash. Community service.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's where we need some form of a contract and that's where I was going, that possibly have a contract and if somebody could only afford ten dollars a week, it costs us four hundred dollars to take and, I'm just throwing numbers out.
Right.
For that dumpster to be dumped one more time to clean this mess up per se. So it takes them forty weeks to take and pay back the four hundred dollars.
But that's not a bad idea.
I don't know. I mean, that, that way, we're not leaving the taxpayers on the hook. We're, we're offering a minimal solution. I mean, because we understand there's already a burden there.
Right.
I know.
No, I, I, that's a great idea, something along those lines. I, I think there's a lot of things that we can work on.
I mean, a community service, so many hours of community service equals so much dollars.
And I really need to.
That too. I just, we gotta look at the liabilities of.
Right.
Some of that.
I think we really need to work with Tom and get some education out there about what people can recycle and what they can't recycle. But Bennington, you don't have to pay a dump fee, which is, I know that town is smaller and that we have a dump fee, but if somebody just has recycling.
Well, what's Bennington pays for in their taxes?
I know they do.
One way or the other, they're.
They do.
Yeah, it's the.
They think they're getting it for free, they're not.
They're not.
There's not the free in this world.
No, I know.
That's why they pay double.
The only thing you get is air. That's not even that free.
You know, so.
Bag raised fire.
You know, recyclables that they could go to the dump and get rid of them and not have to pay the
so.
Transfer station.
Mm-hmm.
Joel did say that it was Bill and him that went and picked up that stuff and so it reminded me of my other question. Do we, is that the process that we wanna continue to follow, that the highway department is sort of handling those things? Or should it?
No, what I really wanna do is nail people with the cameras.
Right, exactly, and stop it from happening.
That, what I, what I really wanna do is I wanna stop people from dumping on the side of the road.
Like a basic one, whip one out in front of one of them.
That's my.
He's driving down the road, like on the blue light.
Ultimately take care of it.
I'm hoping.
I mean, I think driving to Bennington or back home or whatever, you know, the person in front of me throws a bag out the window, it's like, and they don't even think nothing of it.
I picked a bag up on the hill at least once a week.
It's crazy.
I don't.
I'm going up there.
Bags in front of the transfer station when I go to the camel.
Yeah.
Transfer station's closed, they dump the right of gate.
I'm not sure that you're ever gonna stop the person that, that throws their McDonald's bag out of their car when they're driving down the road. I mean, if we think we're gonna stop that.
No, we're not.
That's never gonna happen.
But we need to do something to help educate and to get these people to stop dumping stuff on the side of the road.
That and try to come up with a feasible solution.
Right.
Unfortunately, I think the person who dumps on the side of the road is probably not easily educated.
Right.
I probably agree with you.
That and they probably are.
I'm hard to believe anybody that's doing that doesn't realize what they're doing is wrong.
Right.
Right, that's, oh, that's what I mean.
They're just making the choice because they're being lazy.
Right, they don't care.
Whatever. And they, yeah, and they don't give a shit.
The other problem I was thinking might be, um, for one of these, the situations we were talking about, they may not have a truck, they may not be able to lift certain items. So, and because I know that I've seen the property that we were talking about and I, there's some recyclables or, um, what do you call it? Can you think of the right word? Electronics type things that are
Right.
Free at the transfer station, so.
Right.
That's, you know, just.
Education, education, I guess. So we need to work on that.
How many people don't know somebody with a truck?
Well, so Tara.
It, it actually is harder than you would think if you don't have a lot of family or friends with.
I think this will be, and I hate to table stuff, but this will be coming back, this will be coming back to us in the not-too-distant future because it's something that's on our radar and I will start writing some.
I'll get either maybe these are the ones.
Start writing tickets and see if that helps.
I've had them.
And you actually have to give me my number because it never came through on the email that you sent.
Oh.
There was never a number in it. That's okay.
Interesting, alright.
Yeah, so just give me my.
Find that.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay, um, which brings us to executive for personnel.
Like to make a motion, enter into executive session for personnel.
Second.
Um, any more discussion, any questions? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Will be action after or not?
I don't think so.
I don't think there'll be action after. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, come out of executive session for personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Uh, there's no action to be taken at this time. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive for contractual.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, and anything that, uh, this could put the town in jeopardy if we could speak about it in open session. I don't think there's any action on this either. Um, all those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to, uh, come out of executive session for contractual.[1736.88]
So moved.
Exactly.
All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Any public comment, Tara?
If you have a public comment, please raise your hand or unmute and start talking.
It's only one person.
Say your name.